Welcome to the meeting of the Hattlee Housing Authority. On my agenda, we have topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting. I have one just to start with. We have a finding from the Attorney General's office that this board was in violation of the open meeting law back in December of 2022. The record of that finding will be placed with the minutes of today's meeting in the public record. And if the board so chooses, we can have a separate meeting to discuss the finding and how to have perfect behavior in the Attorney General's eyes moving forward. So for the time being, I'm placing this document from the Attorney General or the Assistant Attorney General's office into the minutes for the public record. Further discussion may follow if the board so chooses. All right, any other topics not previously anticipated?
Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to bring up the newspaper article in the Gazette, but I don't know if we want to discuss this now or further on in our agenda.
It came out.
I'm not asking you.
Why don't we hold on to that suit?
When would you like to discuss it and where would you like this? Not just that we'll put it off, let's have a vote, huh?
Okay, let's set a meeting date for later this month. Is there any other...
I don't understand why we can't fit it in today.
All right, we'll leave it for the end of the meeting if we have time. This meeting is not going to go three hours like last month's meeting. So I've been asked that we finish this meeting in a reasonably timely manner. So no urgency on that one either, right?
A lot of us feel there is urgency on it, yes. Because it has a lot of incorrect quotes, it has a lot of incorrect information.
I thought you meant the recent article on low-income housing.
No, the one about, that was written about.
Oh, okay. We're going to have to put that on the agenda for discussion. It takes a little time, so. So we should have known a few days ago that you wanted it on the agenda to put it on. All right, so let's keep it at hand. Anything else that we isn't on the agenda? All right, approval of minutes. The minutes are massive this month. If we didn't actually have time to review them individually, I would say we tabled the approval of the minutes. Did everybody have time to read through the minutes?
Make a motion. We'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table the minutes till the next meeting. Any other discussions, we're off to order. All right, so let's have a vote on that then. There's no further discussion. All in favor of table it?
Aye.
All right, unanimous to table the minutes. I think that's good because we really do want to review the minutes carefully. Executive Director's report. Pamela, you're up. Barely, barely, barely. All right.
Why not?
Camera's not perfect, son.
At the loudest, nope.
What's that?
At the loudest, nope.
We can hear you, but the public likely can't, but that's okay.
It won't pick up.
No, it will not pick up.
I hope so.
Can we table the executive director's report?
Anything urgent, Pamela?
We need to table the financials and the general.
Did you hear that?
Okay, so she's asking to table because of the technical difficulties?
Does that affect the bills getting paid?
Does that affect the bills getting paid?
No.
Okay. Treasurer's report. We don't have the treasurer here. Vacancy report.
I'm the treasurer, by the way.
Well, that's all.
Yes.
All right, with everybody, we're going to try to schedule a second meeting this month in a couple of weeks if that works for everybody.
That will be, will that be our end of September meeting? Because this is really our end of August, correct?
Right, right.
Okay.
All right, Pamela, we're going to table it and try to schedule another September meeting towards the end of the month, okay? I hope you're feeling okay. And it looks like the window project's almost done, is that correct? Is this building the last piece? Okay, so the window project's almost done. Okay, but we're going to have a congratulations at the next meeting.
Question or information for the next meeting? If the executive director, table and all this. Can we also add under the executive director's report the hearing, that emergency restraining order in court, visit to the police department, and Bruce Budrich's departure as the facilities manager?
You're looking at me when you ask what potential.
Yes.
That's fine, we'll do that, sure.
Point of order or information, none of those things are under the purview of a board of commissioners. None of them.
Well, I'm asking for the executive director's.
Did you hear what he's asking?
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Commission, oh, we need to move right on to the commissioners' special. So I have advertised for executive director and budget for search. So this is about advertising for a new ED and the people that EDs are hiring. So the motion is on the agenda.
Now, the subject's on the agenda.
Subject's on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Before, I have a question on this topic. Two months ago, we were told, when I brought this up at the July meeting, that we could not advertise for executive director, in director, or anything because we were under contract. Now, if that's still the case, then I don't know how we can advertise if we're still under the arrangement of the Hattlee Housing Authority, Mr. Chairman.
But that information from the attorney?
No, that was from Pamela at our July meeting. She said we forgot.
No, well, not.
Pamela?
I recall that at the time. I can't hear.
Okay, I will repeat. I am the one that said that. I misspoke. I did not understand correctly. And then Pamela at the August meeting, on August 11th, corrected my misspeaking. You were here. She corrected that. Yes, under a management agreement, correct? Under a management agreement, a housing authority board can start the process of advertising.
So I would make a motion that we would advertise for either an interim or an executive director and budget the money for that.
Well, I have a second for that motion.
Second.
Now, we're at discussion.
Discussion, yeah. Pamela?
Community is not for an interim because it might expose the business.
Okay, I would amend that motion if they read advertise for an executive director.
You have a second. Any other discussion on that?
Oh, you already said, I have some discussion.
Please.
We did just vote at the very last meeting. We voted, I believe it was four to one on that.
Two.
Well, no, because you voted to not.
Right, that's because I misunderstood, and that's what I...
So we have already made a vote at our most recent meeting that we would not seek a new executive director. We also voted, of course, to enter into the management agreement.
According to Robert Rules revisited, I looked at Robert Rules and said, "A motion to reconsider a vote may be made by a member of the board who voted on the prevailing side." So if the prevailing side was Richie, Reese, and myself, who misunderstood the question when I voted, it can be voted again.
But you are asking on a later day.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
A motion can be revisited.
Just to clarify, I believe we will be going ahead and re-upping with the Amherst Housing Authority and going out to look for a new executive director. As strange as that may sound. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I don't think there's any laws preventing us from starting a search for it.
It's a great question on the management agreement. What the board is looking for is an executive director, and they actually pulled off the table. The management agreement, that's some information that they received from the Hattlee Board last month.
Okay.
Though we could be careful. They extended it for three years, but they may not under these terms.
All right, that's your right to withdraw that. I have not signed it yet. Okay, so we have a vote on going out to look for a new ED on the table. What's that?
Nothing.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No.
No.
Okay, three, two, with the record. Do we want to wait until we hear back from Amherst? Because we got the risk of losing Amherst now?
No. I think we should just go forward.
All right. Management agreement term for three years.
You did.
Yes, we were saying something. We heard that you voted in the last meeting.
Okay. All right, so I just want to pass over that then.
I think we should discuss it.
All right, do you want the management agreement term to be with three years? For whoever we're signing up with.
We voted. Pamela just said that we voted at the last meeting. It was a three to two vote, by the way. The newspaper had it wrong. I did not vote for the agreement.
I know.
And then they corrected that. But Pamela said we've already voted for the three years.
So what I'm hearing is that no matter... What I'm hearing is no matter who we sign up with, it'll be for three years. It's not what we're voting on. Is that what you want us?
No, the timeframe, two, one, two, three, six, whatever. We're voting on the timeframe of the contract, not necessarily who we have with.
I have to remember that. Yes?
You want the management agreement that those are the last. Then the last.
They've already signed it.
Yeah, we have, okay. That's the D B, good.
I also agree to the question. If Amherst has already signed it, Pamela says she's going to go back to them to see if they want to continue this because we were supposed to... They didn't understand that we were doing executive.
If you...
Has this been anything anymore than that?
If this board reneges on a quorum vote from the last meeting and chooses to implement a reconsideration of the vote after we already... And this should have been signed on that day that we voted. Now you're talking about reneging. You might be, I don't know.
I didn't say anything about reneging. I'm just saying I didn't vote for it.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. But you all are down at that end, are talking about revoting on a term. You've already voted on a term.
The chairman wrote up about the term.
The three-year term.
We didn't, number one, we didn't see it. We didn't see this contract. How can we...
Yes, you did. This contract, this exact contract without any signatures has been in your board packet multiple times. And an example of the most recent previous two contracts are also in your board binder.
So I am still...
David?
So she's suggesting that go ahead and sign it, and then let them decide.
Yes, because the board already quorum voted.
Right.
That yes, don't sign it, we haven't read it yet. I'm just asking. That's what I'm saying. Well, I know you are.
Yeah. This contract was provided in the board packet for, what'd you say, July and August? It's also in the board binder. It's been provided several times. So we've all had an opportunity to read. Whether we availed ourselves of that opportunity is a question. Some of us did, some of us didn't. So the thing is, we've already got a quorum vote that we're going to approve the contract. When you're approving a contract, it becomes legally binding by the fact of the quorum vote. The signature, in other words, this could be legally enforceable whether you sign it or not, just like the previous one does.
Thank you.
So what Pamela is now saying is that the right thing to do to avoid any legal exposure here is to sign there. And then Amherst can decide, based on what they see in this video today, to go ahead and implement a 60-day out.
Thank you, we certainly sense that.
And we have a 60-day out as well.
Yeah.
I thought, according to Robert's Rule of Order, it could be revisited. So can't we revisit the term, the number of year term, and have it up for discussion? Because if you can revisit the advertisement for executive director, why can't you revisit the management agreement term time? She's saying, no, it's set in stone. But I don't understand why she's saying.
Here with Vanessa. Okay, I said to agree. Okay, thank you. All right, so no secrets here. I'm going to be signing this. And that gives both either side 60 days to get out of it. Read the motion on the floor.
Please, we're going to sign.
The steps?
Sign. Four copies.
And I give the 60...
And you need it.
You taped this meeting? Chrissy, are you taping this meeting?
He's taking the video.
I don't think it's legal to tape it.
Yes, it is.
Is it?
You just want to go ahead and sign it so we can get this out of the...
Don't you think we should bring it up for discussion?
No.
Give your own little picture.
So there's already been a vote to go ahead with Amherst. And now there's a vote to go ahead and set the search for a new ED. Amherst may or not. Amherst may give us their 60-day notice when they hear that we're doing that. And I wish you the best.
You don't say anything.
I mean, it's all... Hiring of our own attorney and a budget for this. We'll have a motion.
We'll have a discussion.
First, we need a motion, and the second, if we want to hire our own attorney for separate purposes and...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We hire, we hire an attorney that represents the interests of the Hattlee Housing Authority and its board. In line with that open meeting law violation, I plan to go out and have the attorney attend to it on our behalf.
Okay? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on hiring our own attorney for the Hattlee Housing Authority. I couldn't hear what she was saying.
She's going to listen. She, okay, she just wants to listen.
I heard that when she said...
We brought this up, hiring an attorney for the board in multiple meetings, and we've never gotten anywhere. I think hopefully today we can come to a conclusion if we're either going to hire one or not. It's one of those things, like an independent audit, that just gets lost in the shuffle.
Great, please.
Yes, we have voted on this. We brought it up, discussed it multiple times. And we've already voted on this. And so what you're saying is you want to revisit it yet again about hiring an attorney. The point is, is we don't need to spend money we could use for improvements in people's units and other things. It's just going to take away the time of our reserves, and it will take away money from our reserves.
Let me clarify, we already spent money for attorneys. So is the idea of the motion to spend the same money but have somebody who's independent from Amherst?
No, before I speak to that, Reese said that it was voted on before. I don't recall it being voted on. I believe it was brought up, but I don't recall a vote. More importantly, the attorney that represents us, or supposedly represents us, is hired by the Amherst Housing Authority. That is an inherent contract not to represent our interests in Hattlee. Because that attorney is hired and works for the Hattlee Housing Authority.
I can clarify. You want me to clarify? Yeah, go ahead.
So...
Okay, thank you. Pamela, let me ask you a question. I understand if there were any concerns with Hattlee versus Amherst, we would need a different attorney. But is John Leibel, is John Leibel going to take up and represent us with this open meeting law violation, which I disagree with the opinion that came out of the Attorney General's office, by the way?
Yeah, soon.
Some of the, Pam, some of the attorneys that you mentioned, over the years, I know have been the attorneys that have taken tenants to court for addictions. I'm well aware of some of these tenants who are strictly, you know, I could say corporate or DHC debound people. I don't think that they would be, we needed to talk with an attorney. I wouldn't feel comfortable as a board member going to an attorney that's been affiliated with D H C D. I think we need an independent thinker and somebody who is going to be more nonpartial.
But people, tenants, I mean...
But I personally see a problem.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments about this? So let me just suggest, we never meet. I haven't met Attorney Leibel since my resignation. Or, I don't know. So...
He's been September, ended up.
Yeah, he's been here too.
But you weren't supposed to...
Well, you weren't on the board here.
Well, if he's the one, if he's the one that would represent the board on the open meeting law judgment from the Attorney General's office, then I'm okay with it. If he's not, then my motion's going to be an attorney to... Because I think that's what should appeal, that open meeting law violation that came out of the Attorney General's office. Because I personally don't agree with your opinion.
I understand it. Pamela, would it be unusual to invite one of the attorneys to our next meeting and have a discussion about the finding of the Attorney General's office and different courses of action that we might take to respond? You think? An unsatisfying initial step would be to talk to our existing people and see...
With one proviso, Pamela, I didn't get to read the complete Attorney General's opinion, but I think there's a time... but I think there's a time element involved with this. I think it's thirty days, if I recall. I'd like... And I'd like to see, instead of having an email to me, I'd like a hard copy of that at the fingerprints.
But I... David, I don't understand if a board member is sitting here with you and say that they know after living here for years that these particular attorneys are not are oriented towards the powers that be and not towards... I mean, I just know from my... From attending court with many attended that was brought to court. And because of that reason, I would say that we're wasting time going with the attorneys from DHCD. That we need to seek out our own counsel, and we need to know where we can obtain the money. And we have to, and we have to do it quickly because it's a time...
Twenty-one days on responding to the...
I don't want to miss that window.
Right.
Yes, I don't agree with that opinion.
Okay. Yes, Pamela. I couldn't hear what she said.
She wants to know if she has permission from the board to reach out to Lible to ask him to personally call Mr. Jack.
Well, I'd also like him to look at the opinion from the Attorney General's office. And I'd like a hard copy of that, please, because I... It's hard to look at that on an email. And I know that's time sensitive, and I don't want to miss that window. Because I don't agree with the opinion from the Attorney General's office.
And the finding is against the... It was against the whole board.
It's a finding about the board with two specific members of the board violating open meeting law. That was the finding. Pamela was... Our executive director was not copied by the AG's office for this finding because she's not a party to this. But that's why we all got a copy. Are we... Eric, can you send it to Pamela and then she will print it out?
David?
Well, this is it.
Would we allow to bring up where the open...
He got... David gave him...
He gave me the copy. David had the only copy. See, the issue with this complaint is that they're testing that there was deliberation. There was no deliberation. He's merely passing an email of information.
Excuse me. Excuse me, I...
Thank you.
We are... I'm gonna discuss this public meeting at a future date this month, within twenty-one days of the issuing of the... So I would like... I would prefer to have Attorney Lible come to a board meeting and talk to us all as a... Both as an educational exercise and as a review of the finding, which I also have a hard time understanding. Agreeing with...
But that's gonna fall out of time. We only have twenty-one days.
You see if he's available in the next nineteen days. I know you're away. Also what?
The calendar is tied for the next...
Yeah, okay. Well, you guys are gone... Yeah, I can't really find it, but... Reece, maybe the second half of next week, guys, we gotta stop this, please. Maybe the second half of next week or the following week, if somebody had an hour to come in and talk with us, that would be great. Hopefully, we're all around.
Thank you.
Try... All right, thank you. And I'm gonna suggest...
Sorry, this.
That we... Yeah, we're gonna spend another three weeks or two weeks to speak with our attorneys, see how they handle this, and see how we feel about putting out that for a new attorney. What we're doing the search for a new attorney. Is that satisfactory or not?
No, it's not. It's not for me. It's not because I'm naming the complaint.
Okay, so Tom.
Pointless. It's thirty days, and we've been ordered to release our emails where there was no deliberation. It's just passing on information about a contract.
Yeah, well, you can... You have twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days if we appeal to the Superior Court. I'm not appealing this just yet.
Okay.
We have thirty days to respond.
Yes.
And if we meet with the attorney and he agrees that there was no deliberation, then we can appeal this. My unmentioned remarks. And I don't feel that I violated anything.
So we are ordered to release the finding to the minutes, so I'm doing that today.
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm gonna suggest that we have another meeting as soon as the attorneys can... An attorney can be with us. And you still want to go out for the search? Should we have a motion and a second to go out for our own attorney search?
Yes.
Or do you want to wait to meet with our existing counsel and then decide?
I think we should take the vote.
Well, Pamela raised a good point. If there are any issues with Hadley Housing Authority, with Amherst, then we would need our own representation.
Yes.
If there aren't, then we can use John Lible. Currently, I'm concerned with this, and if John Lible or an attorney can handle this, I want to see it.
All right, so Pamela, you're going to explore which attorney in the firm handles open meeting law and could come talk to us quickly, right? And if we have to do it over the computer, we could, but that is not preferable. I'm telling you as chair, that is not preferable. Thank you.
And I don't mind table any other attorney discussion. That doesn't come into play.
Susan, you're the second. In the fusilade, can we wait until the next meeting?
I personally think it was brought up so many times that we should vote on it now. And even if you decide to include somebody from DHCD that's an attorney, at least we'll have voted on it. And we can go forward quickly instead of waiting a whole other month to meet. So let's get it on the table and vote. And you could still have Attorney Lible or anybody else from DHCD. But at least we'll have voted on it and can get going.
Pamela. All right, thank you. So Harry, if you were withdrawing your motion, I'll accept that withdrawal of your motion till after we meet with...
Yes.
Okay, Sue, so we're gonna wait three more weeks, two more weeks, whatever.
Everything you say is wait, okay? All right.
Independent audit and a budget for this. It was asked... I was asked to put this back on the budget, back on the agenda. So do I have a motion for an independent audit and a budget for this? Not hearing the motion, we're gonna pass over that?
No, I'd like to... I'm not gonna make a motion, but I'd like to say something.
Okay.
I still, over the last four years, would like to know that $1.6 billion has been managed and gone and bills and things. And if that's the only way that I can get that with that is through an audit, and I would make that motion because I advocate for an independent, objective audit, not conducted or done by anybody that's paying our bills and everything. And... So I still think that that's out there. I still think that I would like that of that.
I also would, because I think it's another thing we brought up over and over again. There's a month between meetings.
Okay, we don't need a lot of conversation. Do we have a motion?
Well, I just think that it's...
Then I'll make that motion. And see if an independent, objective audit of our affairs, the last...
All right, we have a motion for independent audit for the last four years and a budget to do that. And we have a second?
Second.
And then you further discussion?
Yes.
Reece.
Absolutely. As I said before, the money... And Gary DePace, our fee accountant of twenty-seven years or something, said last time, what, July, the end of July, when he think, that the money for an independent audit would have to come from our reserves. Our reserves, after the window project bills are paid, as President Ratajkovic has been asking these questions, will be fifty-two percent. Will be down fifty-two percent from nearly eighty percent reserves. We cannot go below thirty-six percent, taking sixteen thousand or whatever. Was that the amount that was quoted to be about sixteen to twenty thousand for our year audit?
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen. Okay, so if we take sixteen thousand bucks out of our reserves, we're gonna be getting dangerously close to thirty-six percent reserve, which is kind of the critical balancing point. And we've got a boiler we know that's probably gonna blow this next year. It needs to be replaced. And that has to come out of reserve. I am concerned about the financial health of Hadley Housing Authority, especially when some board members are very interested in becoming self-managed again with our own executive director and a... For sixteen hours a week and a, you know, a maintenance man for seventeen hours a week. And it's not gonna be something that's gonna work very well when there's no money left in reserves to pay for things like boilers.
Reece, I think you're using fear factors, especially people that aren't aware of the fact that monies are there and available for things like boilers that are blowing. When there... You can contact DHCD, there are funds to be had. And when you say things like this to board members that aren't aware that there's monies for things like boilers, you're... I think you scare people into voting a certain way, and you should not use fear factors.
That was, as treasurer and Hadley... That was your treasurer on this floor. I have already asked the questions and it's already... Pamela, if a boiler blows, where does the money come from to replace it? If there's...
I understand the explanation.
Thank you guys to address the chair, okay? So we don't get into an angry back and forth between ourselves.
So Mr. Chair, sue me an allegation. I should... Sue me an allegation directed at me, which is very inappropriate in order to promote funding. So clearly, I was correct.
I believe my...
The funding cannot be used. We cannot get the executive office funding to buy a boiler. As I said, it would come out of our reserves. As your treasurer, I know this. I am not using any kind of fear factor.
But I know that you and Pamela...
Please, I don't want the back and forth between ourselves, okay? It's very...
Well, why is it I get shut down all the time?
Because you...
Because I'm responding to her.
Yes, instead of going through the chair, I'm sorry. But Harry, did you want to address that?
I will address the chair.
Thank you.
Yes. Every time this audit thing comes up, it seems to be an extreme effort put forward to dissuade having an audit. Now, does anybody else see anything wrong with that other than me? Because if there wasn't anything that... And I would not use the term inappropriate. No one's used terms of malfeasance or mismanagement of funds. I merely asked for a review of our finances, independent of Gary the Base and Lisa Fountain.
Let me ask you this, Harry. Do you need four years? Part of the problem is money here, what I'm hearing is, even though we already pay the existing fee for something, so there's some money available. We should keep doing that. Do you want to...
Can I just ask? I would like to speak. That... How do we understand?
Lasting Harry a question on his motion. Instead of four years, do you want to consider a lesser timeframe for the audit to reduce the cost? Two years, satisfying your opinion?
I'd go for the last three years of the contract. Set aside the first year that the board went into Amherst. I would take twenty-one through twenty-two.
Pamela, no problem.
Pamela?
Mr. Chair?
So Pamela's defending our executive directors, defending the status quo way of doing the accounting and the auditing. And then it's been working for a long time. And there's been no sign of mismanagement of money or malfeasance or anything, so...
So Mr. Chair, I made the motion in the second, and if you want to call a vote, if it's defeated, I will bring it up again.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Sue.
As I said before, and I hope I don't get shut down, is the fact that this has been discussed over and over again, like Pam said, and we don't seem to get anywhere. And that's what's so frustrating about these meetings is when we keep... Is we bring up the same thing, and because of the fact that we get shut down, we have to table it or bring it up at another meeting.
Thank you for your comments.
It's been voted on. Nobody's been shut down. It's been voted on.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of a two-year, three-year audit?
Three-year.
We have a friendly...
Three-year.
A three-year audit, independent audit? Say yes.
I say four-year. I didn't... Those are for discussion.
Motion is for three years.
Motion for three years?
I vote yes.
Yes.
No.
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 Okay, so the motion is defeated.
Then it won't come up again.
It won't come up again. Independent audit budget for this, I vote no, that's correct. We're gonna have to approach this question again in a different way. The tenant representative position discussion. This had to do with you, Reece, and the question of whether or not we are hearing from you tenant issues at board meetings or not. And if we're not, why? Is there any mechanism that we can help get tenants more comfortable or whatever it would take to speak with you so that we hear what's going on with the tenants? Pamela shaking her hands, is not how it's supposed to work?
Right. May I? Can I just address it?
Let me finish my speeches. I'm trying to create a more dialogue between the tenants and management and the board, yes.
Oh, so here's what everyone needs to understand. The tenant rep position was created by DHCD, now the executive office, as a way to get tenant involvement on the board. So that... It's a respectful thing. In other words, that a tennis can actually... Would you please tell that woman there?
Change, please.
So that was...
We need to hear you. We can't hear you.
It was created out of respect for tenants.
Respect.
Little bitty, little bitty story going back. The big changes in housing went back to what, two thousand something early, right? Chelsea?
Yes.
So Chelsea now? Yes. So what had happened was there was a Housing Authority executive director who did terrible things to tenants, not repairing, they were living in swill. He was all hooked into... I mean, it was really a bad situation. The feds came in because tenants complained. It was tenants that saved those people in Chelsea Housing Authority. Out of respect about Patrick, created this tenant rep position over the course of some years, right? And so a tenant rep says to tenants, "We respect tenant input. We want a tenant to be required to serve on every single board of commissioners." From the tenant's perspective, tenant reps, however, do not bring individual tenant concerns to the board. The board does not, is not supposed to. This board's a little not functioning properly, but we are not supposed to bring individual tenant concerns or champion tenant clauses. That is, that is a function of a local tenant organization. I strongly encourage tenants to work together to form an LTO, but it's not the job of a tenant rep. In fact, it is absolutely contraindicated for any commissioner on a board to have individual discussions or make promises or discuss with tenants and other board members about doing anything. We have a fiduciary duty, a duty of care, a duty of loyalty as commissioners to the legal and financial health, strength, and vitality of the business entity Hadley Housing Authority.
Okay. Thank you, Reese.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to clarify that I've been told it is perfectly all right for commissioners to speak with tenants.
We told you that.
So if any... So if any tenant wishes to speak to a commissioner, they would. Commissioners not going to speak against, may not speak against policies and make promises to tenants or anything like that, are we allowed to listen? And I would encourage tenants to speak to whoever they're comfortable speaking with if there's things to be fixed. Pamela, management is your, should be your first recourse. So if you don't have satisfaction, and you think that things aren't happening as they should, then you are free to speak up as far as I'm concerned. I'll stand behind that. Harry?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just get a little clarification or comment that this board is not functioning as it should, or is supposed to, according to Commissioner Smith Free. I see that this board is divided in its opinions and interpretations of things and how they function. I also have said that when the time comes when I'm not sitting here, and maybe my brother Richie's not sitting here, that because there is no local tenant organization, that tenants should probably take our spot and run their own complex and facility because they live here, they have a vested interest in what goes on here. And at some point, when I step away or Rich steps away, I think more tenants, like Sue came on this board, Reese is the tenant rep, can't speak for you as the governor's appointment, but I believe that when we are not sitting here, a tenant probably ought to sit on this board and run their own complex through whoever's manager, all executive director and staff or ram or...
Good.
So I want to be on record for that.
I don't disagree with you. Reese said you're in a wonderful position, issue really, pay full attention, I think, to everybody, to the rules and regs and all that stuff, to educate other tenants. So if there could be more tenants on the board, or if you decide to step off, someone could replace you. All right, we won't keep going on about that right now. Policy Subcommittee...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I wanted to address you on this. For four months now, I've tried to get the grounds policy and the common area policy on.
Yes.
And they have not been along the agenda.
The corner border, this is corner proper.
No, but I wanted to let him know.
Corner border.
Before you talked again.
Four, front of border, we're at the policy subcommittees.
I've been trying to get... This is about policies. It's called Policy Subcommittee. Number one, I've asked four times to have this on the agenda. I think four different months on the grounds policy and common area policy is ridiculous. Number two, we've already talked about not having a policy subcommittee, because talking to Mel King and Mass Union, they suggested that board members, and now we still have a policy subcommittee on here, even though they suggested we all work in conjunction with each other, not have a subcommittee.
Thank you, Sue. One more.
Yes. Policy Subcommittee report.
Yes.
Rich and I are on the Subcommittee for Policies. We meant, as I promised last time, our last meeting, that I would give a report now. You know, it got delayed because last week, but anyway. So the first time we met, Rich and I went through all of the local policies. That's everything that Sue just brought up, plus everything else. The policies should be reviewed a minimum of every four years, and it's been since 2017 since these policies were reviewed. There's no notation as to if they were reviewed, so we just assumed they weren't. So we looked through every single local policy, and we decided that, yes, every local policy, and that's the ones that are only for Hadley Housing Authority, it's not including the ones that come down from the state, you know, from executive office. We don't have any say about that. Basically, we just as a board have to sign those. But the local policies, gardening, you know, the flowerbed policy, the common area policy, there's all kinds of... We believe they need to be reviewed. So we have... We're now on our third meeting. We're going to meet again tomorrow, but we have gone through, we picked two, and those were the two that Sue, you brought up, the gardening policy and the common area policy.
Now, I brought up the grounds policy.
I'm speaking.
And there's...
So that...
She's...
It's my turn to give it.
Look, Richie, he's part of the committee.
Sue, this is a report, okay?
But she was speaking. Richie, speak.
Rich asked me to do it.
Sue, what's the matter?
She's taking over the whole meeting.
The money's right here.
She's a...
The money's right here.
And you're allowing her to do it. Rich, do you want me to give the report?
No, 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 let me speak.
Okay.
Speak.
Sue?
Right.
Calm down and listen to the report.
But it's always coming from her. I'd like to hear from the other person who's on the Subcommittee.
Sue?
Start it.
Please listen to the report. Yes. So I've heard so far, you reviewed all the local...
Yes.
Policies. You're meeting again tomorrow. Do we have any draft revisions to review?
We're under draft. And we found a template to put the policies in that will make them more readable, et cetera, et cetera, and give reasons for the policy. So anyway, we're working on the common area policy, which was the source of, as Sue reported, much conflict, and the garden policy, which Sue, you've also said was conflict... It was a cause of conflict, in your opinion, because of the window project. So we decided to take on those two contentious things that you brought to the board. So we're working with that. We do have to look at the legal, you know, there's laws and rules and regs that every policy has to comply with. So we're in that process, looking at the laws and the rules and the regs right now. And then hopefully by the end, maybe by the end of September's meeting, we'll have an actual draft. And remember, it's a draft. It's not set in stone. It's ready for more input. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, and even if you approve the draft, the draft does not become the policy. When it gets into its final form, we want more input. We...
We understand that.
Yeah.
So we're going to be getting all of the policies, one by one, drafts of your revisions, one by one?
Well, come on, it's a lot of work. So we're working on two right now.
All right. And you hope to have those drafts of the revisions to those two by the end of the month or next week?
Yeah, hopefully. And then, you know, we're already looking at, like I said, we already have a list of policies, all the local policies that need to be reviewed. And if anything needs to be substantially changed, we do the same thing. These are just drafts. In other words, work's in all the...
Right.
And then you, the board has to have input.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to say that if Richie is going to be on the Subcommittee, I would like to hear from you occasionally and not have Reese just be the spokesman of you committee. And why I said that, Mr. Chairman, that it's not important to you, when I brought up multiple times that subcommittees, when it comes to policy, should be done, should not happen. We should be working as a group doing this. Not that you can't have one, but they suggested, why even bother going to places like Mass Union and talking to Mel King Institute? They suggest we work equally, but then the Subcommittee exists. So they're working on it, but then they're going to give it to us, and we're going to decide if we keep it, we get it, or get, you know, or get rid of it. Wouldn't it be better if we just worked on it all together as a group, cohesively at one time? So you're ignoring the...
Okay, Sue.
Right.
You can repeat it, huh?
Well, nobody's listening to it, so it's...
Well, here you are. There, I think.
I have...
Yes, I'll comment on that. I have found personally in my twenty-something years in public service, subcommittees can have a tremendous value. They do the preliminary work, they come up with options for the full board to consider and make their recommendations as to which option, in their opinion, is the best solution and why. And that saves the whole board from having to spend their time on the preliminary stages of the investigation or the work. So I'm hoping to see, you know, that they haven't been wasting their time, and now we get their draft, that they're good, and that they're ninety percent of the way there, and that our suggestions as board members will be incorporated if we all agree they make sense. So please don't underestimate, underestimate the value of a Subcommittee. I was sort of hoping that we would take one or two. I've talked to you about this. You know, I did take your suggestions or your request to them before, and they are working on the outdoor policies first. I'm glad to hear that. I would like to have at least one or two draft policy revisions at every subsequent full board meeting, so that the following board meeting, we can come in with our suggestions and finalize these things, okay? Shouldn't be rocket... I don't know if you're looking at other housing authorities' policies, see if they've done the things, but I strongly suggest you do look at other housing authorities' policies and learn. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Yes, Reese?
Yes. I have, just for, just so you know, I have spent, and Rich, we've been meeting every other week or sometimes weekly. I know I have spent a minimum of six, seven hours a week since we started this, looking at this in July. I don't know that... I mean, your time is at a premium, Gary's time is at a premium, maybe Sue, you have more time, in which case, please do, Sue, you've got my email address, send me the information and really incorporate it.
One of the reasons I'm...
Sue, you can't just speak up like that. You have to wait.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. And Reese, thank you. Yeah, Sue.
One of the reasons I'm not for this Subcommittee is because we have such a divided board, and because most likely, knowing how I think or vote compared to how others think and vote, I think that it's, that's one of the reasons, another reason I have trouble with the Subcommittee, that now it is part of a divided group. And not saying we're going to be divided forever in every policy, but because this particular thing has been the divided group, then I think that we're going to end up having to do...
I'll respond to that. So Sue, you're looking for a fight all the time, and I'm feeling like this policy exercise could be a way to bring us all together, because if we truly have the tenants...
I'm just... A version of me.
If you're unable to wait your turn and speak, I'm going to be taking a vote to ask you not to come to me, Sue. And that'll see how, you know, it'd be very unfortunate. So this could be an exercise that brings us together if we really all have the tenants, you know, benefit as our priority. Harry?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to reemphasize that the policies affect all the residents, and the tenants will live here. That's why I continue to say that the tenants should be on this board so they can decide how they want to function in their own facility.
Topic, but thank you.
Yes.
So the public message I want to relay is that the policy exercise should be a great opportunity for us to work together, because clearly policies are set up to benefit the tenants. So please don't go into this, Sue, thinking that that side of the board or this side of the board is going to dominate the policies.
I'm just standing here. That's not...
What we say before.
Right. Pamela?
So I think, like, when Commissioner... Is that the policy, or the tenants to dominate the law? The board's... In the... Yeah. After the Subcommittee... It's... It's out. It is... Want to... Any... This is...
That makes sense. Yes.
Working on the table. I'll see if I... Then he does. I'll read it. But the... I'll read it. First, like...
That makes sense. Good. Well, thank you. And I think that's laid out in the...
Yes, now we're functioning properly.
Yes, now we're functioning. Thank you, Pamela. That makes sense. And I'm sure Executive Office had a...
Stay close here, Pamela. That person's staying. Maybe for this policy. The way it's going right now, you could never get to a way that maybe you can't.
Brian?
Yeah.
Did you hear anything?
You could never...
All right. I think the Executive Office probably lays this out pretty clearly. Or we could review that eventually if we can. If we think that Hadley should define our own subcommittee's task, then we can do that. All right. So you guys are working and you hope to have one or two policy drafts?
One or two.
Two by this meeting. That's good. Now move on to Hadley Code of Conduct.
Be able to get it done tomorrow.
What? Sorry, what?
About the policy. Sorry. We should have it done tomorrow before the board.
Excellent. Good. The last agenda for today is Hadley Code of Conduct.
That's mine.
You inserted that? Okay, great. So the town of Hadley has a rather meaty code of conduct. So I'm going to ask all of us to read this. Even though the Housing Association is arms, Housing Authority is arms length from the governance of the town, I think it's all worth reviewing this ourselves. If there's discussion, I can put it on the agenda. Reese?
Well, we're on the, on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Okay.
But we haven't read it yet.
Well, the board packet came out.
I got no, so the board packet was being ready, I think, yesterday. I haven't read it.
Okay. So the town of Hadley on, well, they, 7/19 of this year, adopted a code of conduct guidelines for town boards, commissions, and committees. And they updated on July 19, their Town of Hadley Committee handbook. So it does impact us. We're not a board in the town. We're kind of in a weird position. We are created by state law. We're very separate from the town. The town has no say in our operations at all. But for appointing, and the town clerk putting on the ballot, candidates to serve on the board. And also discipline of board members who violate ethics or whatever. So...
You'd like us all to read this?
I would like us all to read this, but something that would be a good exercise is everywhere, for instance, it says select, for the code of conduct, everywhere it says select board, just put Hadley Housing Authority. I did a, I did a kind of a mock-up that way, changing it to be like exactly for the Hadley Housing Authority. We might even want to consider to adopting a modified version of Hadley's code of conduct that totally goes along with Hadley's code of conduct, but it would be our own Board of Commissioners' code of conduct so that we make sure we don't have ethics violations, open meeting law violations, other kinds of problems. And if we adopted this and helped each other to it, then we would all be safe from accidentally violating open meeting law or what have you. It also would improve the professional behavior or behavior of our Board of Commissioners on this board.
Okay, thank you, Reese. So please, everybody, will you look at this code of conduct carefully? See if you think it all would apply to us and we can adopt it as the Hadley Housing Authority's code of conduct.
Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Mr. Chairman. This is the town of Hadley's code of conduct. So if Reese is suggesting that we look at this and adopt some of this for our own needs, maybe Burr and Rich can go through this and only put in where it would apply to the Hadley Housing Authority. Because we have been told a number of times that the Hadley Housing, the Select Board and the, they have no jurisdiction over the Housing Authority. So if that is the case, and we're being presented with the town of Hadley's code of conduct, this is really town of Hadley's code of conduct. So if it were revised in some way, shape, or form for this board, the policy committee, I think, would go through this and doctorate our specific needs.
You guys want to go through it?
Because I don't think we want any more of these things.
Chairman?
No, no.
I, my problem is that sometimes people on the board's code of conduct is happening outside the board meetings. It's happening in the community room, happening outside of the, you know, across the facility. Where does the code of conduct come in? Is this code of conduct just for a meeting? Or is this for, well, I'm just, I'm saying, are we looking at just for the meetings? Are we looking at board members that are acting...
That's a reasonable question.
...dickensling outside of our meeting?
Just take a look and see what they've decided that their committee members may and may not do out in public. Just take a look. All right, guys. I was asked to keep the meeting short today. If there's any other...
We're going to get back to the newspaper.
Oh, I'm trying to do... Outside, oh, okay. I can, I can stay top there because I just, the traffic will be there.
Okay, so Sue, we're going to talk about the newspaper.
Well, the newspaper article was, had a lot of misinformation. It had myself quoted when I never had anybody come speak with me. If some of this came off of another board meeting that was previously, it was taken out of context. And it had a lot of misinformation. I don't know if anybody wants to chime in. Do you want to talk about the newspaper article that was...
Well, I had a couple of comments about the article to the chairman.
Sue, so...
That's what they're asking for now, if you want me.
Okay. Do you have any action for the board, please?
Well, I was surprised personally that it came out in the paper with no knowledge of you, Mr. Chairman, that was even being done. Or that it was checked with you on the accuracy of the information that was in there, especially on the vote of contract, where I distinctly, over the last seven, eight, or nine months, have been advocating not in favor of that.
So you guys have an issue with the Daily Hampshire Gazette?
I'm just curious why you were contacted and for the validity of the information being printed.
Okay, I was not contacted. It sounds like you have issues with the Daily Hampshire Gazette.
Not now, because they retract the vote.
They did?
Yeah, they did a rebuttal to the vote.
Sue, Pamela.
They did.
Yes. Okay, so thank you for reading those articles. And we should all be careful that the public sees the truth as much as possible. I'm going to mention, maybe I should, that there's a long history of the Gazette not always getting meetings exactly right. So please, keep an eye on housing authority business. Anything else that people would like to bring up at today's meeting? Okay, why search for something? All right, public comment? You have to be short today. Public comment.
Sue Oppenheimer, acting as a tenant, I wish, had some things to bring up. I know that I've lived here a long time. Many people have asked for changes in apartments. They have not been able to move to another apartment, always being told that if you're moving to another apartment, your apartment would have to be renovated, the one you're moving out. Just in the last six months, we've had three changes from tenants moving from apartment to apartment. That's one of the things I wanted to bring up. I wanted to...
Is that good or bad?
Well, it's, it depends on where. Many of us have asked for apartment changes and haven't got.
Plain favorites.
That, and that, and another thing I wanted to bring up is the fact that in the door of the, of the office, it said employees only. I've seen tenants come out of that office and they're not board members or chairmen of the board. And I know it's stripped off, you know, you just can't walk into the office. But many of us have noticed a few tenants over and over having private meetings in the office. I, um, let's see if there's anything else. I guess that would be it for me.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
Did you want to speak, Pamela?
No.
Okay, good.
Tenant, any tenant?
Anybody wants to speak? Just identify yourself and your address, please.
Yes, I'm Maggie Aldrich McCassy. I live at number 21. I'm one of the ones that got transferred from number 23 to 21 after putting in a very reasonable request legally to the Housing Authority because of my ability to walk now. And I was tripping over my entranceway and got hurt several times. That's why I was moved. Thank you.
So that's a good thing?
That's a good thing. Because I was put in, sorry, his name. Thomas is great. I was put in the entranceway where I can now go in with this and walk without falling. But I appreciate what they did for me.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that. Maggie's problem was a reasonable accommodation that wasn't being taken care of. She tried to do the, do it the right way by asking for a reasonable accommodation to the unit. Am I correct? To the unit that you were living. All they had to do was give you a ramp or whatever. But instead, they moved her to another apartment. And it is great for her because there's no step. So it's working for her. The problem is the reasonable accommodations are being done with favoritism. Favoritism aren't getting what they want. Other people are not.
Well, thank you, Judy.
I have more to say, by the way, but I did want to verify.
I was given the option for a rent. However, I'm not going to get into discussion of with who or what was said regarding it. However, the better thing was not the rent because of my walking ability and the ice on the ramp and whatever in the winter. It was a better option to take that.
Thank you. Good.
I do have something else to say. Judy, we're on call in number eight. Once again, I'm being accused of being behind in my rent. This is what other tenants need to hear and know. Would you please let him listen to me without your interference?
Just go on.
So, unknowing, unknown to me, my rent has been changed. It's been increased, which I would have expected. The social security went up for us. That should have been done through the reasonable, the recertification. Recertifications have not been done. So what I get instead is yet another $25 late fee. This is something that tenants need to know as a group. If it's just me, then other action needs to happen. If it's happening for all of us, then it still needs action. This is not the way you do business. You send this, and I'm going to let you read this. It says nothing. Your rent is past due. Period. Where's my recertification? We're supposed to sign another contract. I have not been offered any of them.
Judy, this is really between you and management.
Well, you know...
So I'm going to ask you to do something rather than have these complaints go on. Could you please write up your complaint and present it to management? And if management's response is unsatisfactory, I think that you're going to bring it to the board.
I've emailed. It says if you have any questions, contact Mary Billion. I've sent her three emails with no return, no acknowledgement whatsoever. This is how, this is how housing works. It's not sufficient and it's not fair.
Do you have a grievance? Do you have a grievance about the way your rent's being handled, correct?
Obviously.
Yeah.
Weirdly.
Is there a standard grievance procedure that you can follow? Sorry, I'm being direct.
I don't know. Well, there is a grievance policy, but the management is in charge of grievances. And so I get nowhere. I'll get called into court. I'll get an emergency restraining order put on me for something I didn't even do. It's not, it's not tenant friendly. It's not tenant respect. We get none. None. So what I wrote up for the last Tuesday was, last week I received this letter. Did I behind in my rent? And I just wanted to say a few other things. That last week was my birthday. And what I was hoping as a present to me is to move out of here. Is to move the hell out of here.
I heard you.
You heard me. Everybody else heard me. Because I'm at this age, and there are other people here that are my age, maybe. Over here.
Sue, I'm not sure.
Over here.
So you only got a couple minutes here. How can you board?
I, I think I can speak for them. I think what we want is to live in a place where we're respected, where we're treated fairly, not the favoritism that goes on here. Not fearing every time management isn't getting their way. They get an attorney libel, you know, involved. This is not the way an elderly community is supposed to live.
Right, you know, and why don't you write up your thinking, your feelings about this? Be as specific as you can. Make copies for the board. And if we feel like it's something we should talk about with management...
Love it. I'd love to do that.
Would you please? That would be fine.
Thank you.
We wish you luck and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yes, Maggie?
Yes, I want to make one statement about a wonderful job that they have done with the windows. This place looks like a colonial village.
It's going to wait till next week.
Looks very deceiving.
Yeah, let's, let's choose a date for the next meeting and then sue.
The last Tuesday of September?
Last Tuesday of September is our regular date.
11 o'clock.
Let me just get the date on that.
The 26th.
The 26th. So that's 9/26 at 11:00 a.m. Does anybody have a conflict with 11:00 a.m. on 9/26?
All set.
All right, that's going to be the next meeting.
September 12th.
And can we please go over the agenda, Mr. Chairman, before it gets sent in to make sure?
I've been trying to send out the agenda before I sent it in, but I can continue to rank better job on that, I'm sure.
I have to say one more thing.
Okay.
One more thing as a tenant, I'm speaking. I really think it's bad public relations for our Housing Authority to be having our management be, you know, basically going after the Select Board in town, going after the senior center in town, and then also going after the chief of police in town.
Yeah.
And then our own board, having a board member that's also filed charges against her own board members after only being on the board for three months. I think that this has nothing to do with, with being dysfunctional. This is just pure mean spirited behavior. And I want, you know, people to know about it. It's hard for me to fathom that there's that much hostility going on.
There's no other comments?
Donnie has something.
First, thank you. Second, we have a sub motion of second. No, I'm sorry. Okay. I'd like to see us break away from unanimous. You'd like to see us break away from that? We have motion and a second. I'm sorry, that's not, we're in the sort of motion under. We're voting to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.